One more time. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, wherever we are. Welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
All council members are present.
Thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are starting with a ceremonial presentation thanking the Millbrae Lions Club for their $6,000 donation to the city's youth programs. And I believe we have several Lions present, including three of our council members here. But gentlemen and any ladies here, could you join me at the podium? I didn't know we were supposed to wear our shirts. There we go. Okay, why don't we just bring the whole council down here? Come on, come on. All right, we gotta... Calvin, wait, we gotta do our little reading thing here. Certificate of Commendation presented to Millbrae Lions Club in appreciation for your $6,000 donation to the Millbrae Recreation Department to purchase an inflatable outdoor movie screen system as part of the joint City of Millbrae/Millbrae Lions Club project. Millbrae Goes to the Movies. The donation was also used to purchase two video game systems and ancillary equipment for the youth entertainment program at the community center, our temporary community center. Thank you very much to the Millbrae Lions Club for your continued support to our youth and community.
All right, welcome. Thank you so much. Pass the check. There we go, here we go.
One, two, three, cheese. Louder, I can't hear you. Cheese!
Finance Director?
And let's just say, the Movies in the Park, it's a spectacular event. If you haven't been out there and seen what happens, everybody brings their lawn chairs, families, I mean, it's just a great and wonderful experience. Thank you so much to the Millbrae Lions who are always a great assistance to this community for various and numerous events. Can we give them one more round of applause? And recently, too, we'll thank Group Four for providing the popcorn machine. It's always good. Vice Mayor Lee?
I just also want to give a shout out to Lion Dave Van Ward and Rob Decote for shepherding this project through. Maybe, Rob, can you come up and just tell us a little bit, give the audience a little idea of what's gonna go on, how long it's gonna last, and what type of movies are gonna be shown? Thanks.
Yeah, happy to. First of all, thanks for the collaboration with the Lions Club. We were very happy to come forward and support this. A special shout out to Mackenzie Brady, the Recreation Superintendent. I gotta tell you, she kept this project alive. We've been working together for about a year to bring this project together. So the short of it is this, it's a portable movie screen that will start in Central Park. And Mackenzie, if I get anything wrong, you certainly can come up here and tell me. But I think it starts on July 20th. First movie will be Zootopia. Sort of the theme and the premise of this was a community opportunity, a community bonding event. We kinda need that in Millbrae without the Rec Center. Bringing folks together to see a movie seemed like a really kind of cool idea. Sort of the agreement that the Lions Club has with the city is that we bought the movie theater system and the city makes the arrangements to bring the movies in. So I know Mackenzie's been working hard on making sure that movies are identified with the Cultural Arts Committee on the type of movies that'll be brought in. They'll be family-friendly, and we'll be able to kind of have this entertainment on a regular basis. And we're shooting for not just during the good weather months, but potentially inside during the winter months as well. We have a few things working as well on that. And then the second part was a gaming system set up for the interim Rec Center for the kids. Not every kid and every family can afford a PS4 or an Xbox or an X1. And so the idea was, all these kids need the opportunity to have that experience, even if it's in a controlled environment like the Rec Center. So City Rec's been working on how to bring that to life and control that and let the kids have some fun playing with that as well. So thank you for the partnership, and we look forward to seeing you guys at the movies. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Agenda Overview. Ms. Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with some community announcements, again, to follow what Mr. Decote just spoke about. On Friday, June 15th, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, Millbrae Patrol Bureau, and the City of Millbrae hosted a movie night at Central Park. The event was a great success, showing "Mona." The next movie will be Millbrae Goes to the Movies on July 20th, as Mr. Decote mentioned. Food trucks will be on-site, and the movie will be Zootopia. The Central County Fire Department would like to thank everyone who participated in the Chinese-speaking Emergency Preparedness Class. This was the Central County Fire Department's first-ever Get Ready Emergency Preparedness Class taught exclusively in Chinese. The class was taught by CERT volunteer Mike Chang with the support of CCFD Board Chair Marie Chang. Mike and Marie have been instrumental in making this class possible. CCFD and the city are planning to host more events like this in the future and are looking forward to hosting a full CERT course in Chinese in the future. The city would like to remind people to be proactive in their recycling efforts to reduce the amount of refuse we place in landfills. There was recently inaccurate information put out from residents that it did not matter if recyclables were separated and they all went into the same truck compartment in pickup. This is not true. Pickup trucks for recyclables have split compartment openings on top of the trucks so that metals and plastics are separated from paper products. We ask that residents, please, separate your recyclables. Residents can recycle used household items by placing aluminum, steel cans, glass, and plastic bottles under the blue lid of their split carts. Newspapers, magazines, cardboard, and other paper products go under the gray lid. So we'd like to thank you for your help to be proactive in those recycling efforts. Moving on to tonight's agenda, we'll start with the Agenda Overview, the Report of Bills and Claims, an informational item, followed by City Attorney Report Out From Closed Session of June 12th, followed by Approval of Minutes, an action item for the regular meeting of June 12th, 2018. There are no oral reports from committees' commissions. This will be followed by public communication, the consent calendar, including the following: A resolution accepting the 2017 sanitary sewer mains and lateral smoke testing project as complete, and the filing of the notice of completion. A second action item, resolution authorizing the city manager or designated to execute public works agreements with three contractors for on-call tree maintenance services and emergency tree maintenance services for a one-year term in an aggregate amount not to exceed $450,000. An action item and a resolution accepting the interim Community Center project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion. An action item to adopt the resolution authorizing an addendum to the agreement for professional services with Stepford for information technology support and related services exercising the first one-year option term in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Authorizing additional addenda to the agreement in an aggregate amount not to exceed $50,000 for the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Authorizing purchases of software, hardware, and related technology items from Stepford in a total amount not to exceed $100,000 for fiscal year 2018-19. Executing an agreement with Mitel for telephone system and support for a three-year period in an aggregate not-to-exceed amount of $100,000. And additional addenda to the Mitel agreement in an aggregate amount not to exceed $50,000. And executing an addendum to the agreement with GSD Consulting for project management and technical services for the financial system replacement, extending the term for one year and increasing compensation in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Executing an agreement with Mitel for telephone system and support for a three-year period in an aggregate not-to-exceed amount of $100,000. And additional addenda to the Mitel agreement in an aggregate amount not to exceed $50,000. And executing an addendum to the agreement with GSD Consulting for project management and technical services for the financial system replacement, extending the term for one year and increasing compensation in an amount not to exceed $100,000 for the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Next action item, a resolution approving a waiver of up to $6,000 in rental and setup breakdown fees for the use of the Chakuti Room for self-help for the elderly through June 30, 2019 in order to operate a weekly senior lunch program. The next action item is adopt the resolution approving an exemption of setup and breakdown fees for Millbrae-based nonprofits and Millbrae-based service organizations when the organizations are renting facilities for organization business. Next action, to approve by motion a fee waiver of staff costs totaling up to $1,600 in street closures of Broadway, Meadow Glen to La Cruz, Taylor Boulevard, Frontage Road to Magnolia, and Hillcrest, Frontage Road to Magnolia on August 17, 2018, from 4:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. for the Millbrae Machines Car Show. There are no public hearings. Under existing business, we have an update, an informational update on the Community Center rebuild project. And under new business, to consider a fee waiver request of $144 by Councilmember Ann Schneider for rental of the Community Center Great Room on July 19, 2018, followed by council comments and a closed session this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item we have is City Attorney.
The City Council met in closed session on June 12th to consider the case of Dargod versus the State of California at all and provided directions to counsel.
All right. Approval of the minutes from June 12th, 2018. Ms. Schneider?
In the first part here, I'm sorry, Elena, I didn't get them to you. I had a ton.
Your mic, please.
In the section talking about Millbrae Lions, they don't have staff. So it's a totally volunteer organization. And in the document, it says staff. And getting to the minutes here. There's one other section where it says, "I would like staff to ask the mayor to meet, talk about shared bicycle..." That wasn't really, it was to coordinate, for staff to coordinate a meeting with the Subcommittee and the Bike Pedestrian Committee, which is a Subcommittee of the Park and Rec Commission. Those are the two changes.
Any other additions or modifications? Someone like to propose approval? We have a motion by Ms. Oliva and a second by Mr. Holliver. Your votes, please.
Item number three, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 12th with the changes proposed by Councilmember Schneider, passed with a vote of four to one, with Vice Mayor Lee abstaining.
Okay. Mr. Lee was not present, so moving along then here. Oral reports, we have none. Public comments, starting with Winn. Nice to see you again. Please.
Good evening. I am here tonight to tell you that in Union City, they're having some march about this thing with, you know, how they did this weekend, they had this thing in Southern California, and Maxine Waters was telling everybody about, "We have to push back." And she's advocating violence and stuff because she said, "We're doing this for the children of these immigrant families." And so they're doing some kind of march tonight over in Union City. And I thought that was really strange because if we're doing this for the children, what about the USA children? You know, you re-elected Jackie Spears who put fluoridation in the drinking water for the rest of the state, which lowers children's IQs. You have the Harvard brain damage studies on public record, and I've given you every cancer's cutty of what that fluoridation chemical does. And nobody did nothing, so that's an approval that you approve of putting poison in the drinking water. Now, the chloramine leaches lead. And what I found out today, they're replacing some of the sewer lines where I live. And I talked to one of the water guys that was, you know, for the water company. And he said, "Did you know that they actually exempted the schools from being tested for lead?" So the government's always passing laws to protect their butts from being sued because they knew that adding ammonia to the drinking water would cause the lead to leach from the pipes. And any house built before 1988 has lead-soldered seams. So especially in old schools, and you know, there's some old schools here in Millbrae, that it would leach lead into the water pipes. You know, it would leach lead from the water pipes into the drinking water of the students. So right there in Hayward, they got some water filters for the schools, but they don't have money to put the new water, the new fountains in that have water filters on it. So they're just doing one thing after the other. But one thing I was really upset about is the 5G cell tower thing because the more I've been listening about this, the scarier it is. And there is a man that is from Australia, and he is on YouTube. It says, "5G smart grid, great summary of the world we are rapidly heading into." And this man is incredible to hear him talk. In less than five minutes, he's gonna tell you exactly what that stuff does and why they're putting it in. And they are protesting this globally. Because as they spray us with aluminum oxide, strontium and barium in those chemtrails, we're breathing aluminum in the air. The aluminum phosphate fertilizer waste, we're drinking aluminum in our drinking water, and it's corroding everything that has aluminum on it. So we're loaded with these particles, and we're being injected with these forced vaccinations on our children, and now they're gonna do it in adults in 2020. And when they turn on these 5G, it's the 5G, which is the next generation, with these microwave frequencies, they're gonna cook ya. There's gonna be a lot more people dying, and they're revving it up right now, and they're putting it in all kinds of neighborhoods, and it will be here in Millbrae if not yet. And this is something that if you value your life and your children, if you look up Deborah Taveras, StopTheCrime.net, she has the document on the genocide treaty, and 5Gs is sterilizing everybody. It cooks your ovaries and your eggs, and we're gonna have a world of sterilized people. So please look that up. And the other one, too, is from Kevin Modest, and it says, "The dangers of 5G wireless network and what you can do." This guy is from the California Tumor Registry, and he's telling you which senators and stuff to call and what to complain about. And you better get off your rear ends because this is a life and death situation.
Thank you very much.
And we must save our children.
Shailin Craig?
Good evening. My name is Shailin Craig, and I work with Youth Leadership Institute, or YLI. I'm here with one of my colleagues from Breathe, California, and one of our youth leaders from our Youth Tobacco Education Coalition group that we have. And I'm here just to share with you a couple of updates about what we're working on with the coalition right now. You may or may not have heard that just recently, earlier this month, on June 5th, the County Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to adopt an ordinance to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products and prohibit pharmacies as well from selling tobacco products. So this is a big win for the Tobacco Education Coalition and tobacco prevention in general, taking really a strong stance against the tobacco industry to protect our youth who've been historically targeted by this industry, right? And so you may or may not know that San Mateo County has the lowest smoking rate in the state, which is great. We do a really good job at tobacco prevention. And so all of that is to say that we really look forward to working with cities like Millbrae on some of these, some of our policy efforts to continue to prevent tobacco use and to work on reducing exposure to secondhand smoke, particularly in housing. So homes are one of the major sources of exposure to secondhand smoke, especially for children. This is a major concern for youth, as well as seniors, pregnant women, et cetera. And so, you know, Millbrae does not yet have a policy to protect people living in multi-unit housing from secondhand smoke. So we're looking forward to working on that with you all and adding you to the growing list of cities in the county that have already passed this policy. So thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Randy Yang. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. So I'm Randy Wong, and I'm at Breathe, California, and also with the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. I just want to echo a couple of things that Shailin has said. You know, I think it's really great just to be able to bring the news that our county has at an estimated 6.6%, the lowest adult smoking prevalence in California of any county. It's something that I know people in this county have been working on for years through educational efforts, informational, you know, awareness programs. And also, you know, we think also due to like a lot of different policies that help create an environment where smoking is not as common or glamorized, and also where people are less exposed to secondhand smoke. So one of those topics that we and the Tobacco Education Coalition are very interested in is this issue of secondhand smoke that we know has already been dealt with inside other indoor areas like restaurants and bars, places like that. But we also recognize, and we wish that smoke didn't travel in the way that it does, or that e-SIG particles didn't, you know, do similar things of penetrating walls and things like that. But we do hope that if the city council should decide to do something on that, we're very willing and able to help provide information and other resources on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's the last speaker slip that I have. Moving on, we have the Consent Calendar. Items five, resolution accepting the Senate... Oh, yes, excuse me. Did you have a comment, Mr. Holliver?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item 10 from the consent calendar.
Hi, any other items? Okay, and specifically to the Lions Club there. As far as the nonprofits go, we heard you, and we hope this will be helpful as far as that item goes. Okay, we're only pulling item 10. We have items five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 11. Do I have a motion? We do. A motion from Council Vice Mayor Lee, second by Ms. Schneider. Your votes, please.
Items five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 11 on the consent calendar passed unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Holliver, did you have a question specifically, or would you like a briefing?
No, well, I mean, I could take a briefing, but I just had a couple of comments about this. And hard to bring this up with our friends from the Lions here in attendance tonight, but I think the way that it is currently written is a bit problematic. I think it's a bit too broad in terms of what it allows for nonprofits to use that space. And I think with the Parks and Rec Commission currently working on room rental rates and usage fees and all of that, it should probably, in my opinion, I think it should go back to them for further refinement. The way that it's written now, you know, it seems like any, first of all, we don't know exactly who these nonprofits are. We know the Lions, we know the Rotary, we know several others in Millbrae, but I'm sure there are some nonprofits that could spring up that we are not aware of. We don't know exactly what they're doing. And the way it's written, it seems like they could pretty much occupy that space anytime for any amount of time for free. So I personally would not support it the way it's currently written.
Ms. Schneider?
It's my understanding that it's not, so for example, the Millbrae Leos meet there and the Boy Scouts meet there. They're still gonna pay their hourly room rental, they're just not paying for the setup fee. And this came to me from a number of community groups who said, "Wow, suddenly now we're gonna have to pay an extra $55 every month that we meet." I don't know how often the Boy Scouts meet. So they're still paying rent, just not that setup fee.
Is that correct?
That is correct. We identified as a practice, we were incorrectly charging that fee only one time, and so we notified those organizations that the fee was to be charged with each rental. The components of that included, they will do their own setup and breakdown of the room, but they will still pay their rent, and it does require they are actually doing organization business. You know, so for example, they can't put through some other organization's event through their... their waiver.
Okay, so perhaps I misinterpreted the report and the resolution. The way that I read it was, essentially was a free rental for any nonprofit anytime, which, not to word, I'm glad that the Lions have helped to correct me on that. So, in that case, I'd be happy to support it.
Room rental fees would still come through council for approval.
Is there any documentation or, I believe in our nonprofits and particularly the Lions here, but were this to become an abuse in any way, shape, or form, is the city protected regarding the setup fees? I mean, if this is just a regular procedure, yet you might have a nonprofit that's not as responsible as the ones we are aware of.
So, the resolution provides for the city manager to prepare implementing regulations. So, some of the items we've talked about is assuring that it's a nonprofit based in Millbrae versus maybe one that uses an alternate location for an address, you know, assure they have a nonprofit status, having some waivers. So, they're taking some responsibility for doing that setup and breakdown. So, we will have some regulations. And absolutely, if we're finding that it's not working, we can bring back a new item to council to say, you know, this plan didn't work out. So, that's always an option as well. But we do have implementing regulations that we can provide more clarity within staff direction.
That would be helpful, just to protect the city overall. Okay. Ms. Schneider?
So, the city manager and I talked about this, because if the city wanted tables and chairs set up a certain way, they simply have to let the groups go. But the other part of it was that these were community-based groups that do work into the community. So, they're giving time back into Millbrae, and it's just waiver of that setup charge.
They also told me.
Vice Mayor?
Sorry. They also told me that they do a lot of this setup and put down themselves anyways.
And I'd like to thank the interim city manager who's not here for actually proposing this. It was a nice addition. And so, we have a motion and a second. Your votes, please.
Item number 10 passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much again. Okay, no public hearings, existing business, community center rebuild project.
So, our project manager, Peter Ingram, will be presenting on this item.
Mr. Ingram, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Peter Ingram, you're project manager for the Community Center Rebuild. In your packet, you have a staff report, and I must apologize for the oversight of dropping the attachments that are referenced. They didn't get in there. We apologize for that. We'll make sure that doesn't happen again. You should have hard copies in front of you. Most of that will look familiar from either prior reports or presentations from recent council meetings. And certainly, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'm basically here just to highlight a few things in terms of next steps that the team thinks are of special interest to the council and to answer any questions you have. And also, we'll defer to Mayor Pappan and Councilmember Halliburton if they have any updates to the council from their subcommittee activities, which are ongoing and industrious, I might say, from a spectator view. So, what I'd like to really highlight is that the design team, which is our Group Four architecture firm, and their subconsultants, and a mix of your staff, have been working on developing the conceptual options based on your direction earlier this month. It was at your last meeting. And the next steps on that, as they are now planning to execute, is they would really like to do some reviews of those conceptual options with council members who are not on the subcommittee. And so, they'll be reaching out through your city clerk to try to set up briefing sessions sometime in early July. We think that'll give each of you the opportunity, if you haven't already, to just make sure that your voice is heard and the most important things to you at this stage of the design are captured. Because after that, we'll go back to the advisory committee in the middle of July, and we'll vet the options and ask them what they think they would like to recommend coming back to the council. And then, at the end of July, early August, we will begin the public outreach to get your communities' input on those emerging options and the next steps. So, that's really the focus of the design team. The project management team, as you saw in your consent calendar tonight, the interim facility is now completed, and you've just authorized it to be declared complete. And with that action, we're able to submit an auxiliary, or supplemental request to our insurance carrier, your insurance carrier, to seek full funding for that facility. You may recall that they had agreed to fund the initial bid amount, but the door's still open to go back to them and try to get fully reimbursed. So, we will immediately get on that activity, and I'll keep you apprised. With that, I would just also point out in your staff report on page two, under the analysis section, the online survey that has been active throughout this first wave of public input is being shut down tonight. And so, Group Four will synthesize all those results and do a final tabulation of that. So, you'll see that come back to you in your next meetings, as well as through the advisory committee and the subcommittee. And then, on the subcommittee front, we are focused on the financing strategy and the polling that you authorized to begin. And that group is meeting regularly to make sure we stay on schedule, because there's a compression thing going on in July. And we want to make sure you feel comfortable that you have enough information about the evolution of the design to also give guidance on the funding. So, with that, I defer to you, Mayor Pappan, and answer any questions any of you have.
It's Pappan.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Yeah, just as a form of background, in July 2016, we had a tragic fire, for anybody who's just tuning in, and our community center, recreation center, burnt down. So, since that time, we have been dealing with insurance companies. We've been, and the individuals responsible, we will say, were prosecuted to the fullest extent that you can to a couple of minors. And that part of the tragedy has been resolved as far as the law is concerned. So, we've been dealing with the insurance company. You will notice a temporary facility in the parking lot here at City Hall. That is a different set of funding. Now, we are hoping to move forward with one building, and one building only. There was master plan done for all of the parks, but the primary goal is to restore the services and programs for all of our residents. And that would be a recreation center, which is basically the footprint you will see on the website and where our former building was. And the accelerated movement, as Mr. Ingram has stated, is due to regularly increasing costs. We would like to try to make this a reality. There are subcommittees. We try to have regular briefings here at the council because of the Brown Act, which requires only two members of the council can be on the subcommittee. And we're trying to keep all of our colleagues and the rest of the public fully involved and engaged in this process. This is a community project. And we're so thankful to everyone who has shown up at the meetings and given us their input and direction on what they would like to see within the building, all the different aspects of a new and improved building, a sustainable building, something that will address the ever-growing population of Millbrae and many diverse age groups throughout our city. It is a very exciting opportunity that we hope the public will work with us through this process so that we can actually and hopefully break ground next year. But again, this has been a community effort, and we thank everyone who's been involved in that effort. We will be getting a portion of the, what has been identified now as a $30 million building, a portion from the insurance of the old building, a portion from a developer contribution, which brings it down further, the $30 million. It should be about, as the report here says, $10 million in proceeds and developer contributions. The city is exploring another $8 million in the sale of surplus property, which we will be talking about even further. We may have some sort of a public hearing regarding that as well, so that people know what's happening to defer the cost, to make this a reality. And then, there will be a gap of $12 million, which is going to be explored. If somebody gets a phone call, you will be asked your opinion regarding how that is set up for the sole purpose of breaking ground next year on a community center. So, we're looking at really two-thirds or 60% of the costs if this assessment becomes a reality, and then helping the, or the help of the voters and the residents of Millbrae as to the one-third, the $12 million bond, which is estimated right now as $8.70 per $100 purchase value of your home. $100,000, excuse me, very important. $100,000. They've estimated that the average home purchase price in Millbrae. Assessed or purchased? Assessed. Well, if you bought your home years ago, what it was assessed at would be about $600,000, which works out to something like $57 a year in assessed value to help with this funding. So, that's where we are at this point in time, and this is what we're exploring as a council to try to make this a reality. Very important aspects of the community center are that it will have a community's room with a capacity of up to 300 people, a commercial kitchen, people can rent out for different events, a childcare preschool section, which is very high demand in our region right now. And we're hoping to get some sort of corporate sponsorship for that aspect of the building. There will be a senior section, as we've had before, a youth section, all different kinds of sections for art programs. Go ahead and pipe in here. Fitness, go ahead. You're on the subcommittee. And this is all on the website. Mr. Halliburton?
No, that was all extremely well said. I don't think I have much else to contribute at this point.
Okay. I know we have questions. Ms. Schneider?
So, when I read tonight's staff report, it said that it was shutting down the survey today. So, I went and looked at the survey. And if I started with question one, it showed, and you're supposed to pick three, and in fact, the software won't let you go if you don't pick three. But there were only four pictures. One was park-oriented, one was traditional, two were California contemporary, and all the other pictures weren't there. So, I ended up picking mine and two blank pictures, because the only way I could move to the next part of the survey was to click on three. And it was like that throughout the survey. Now, there were only five questions, so it's not like it was a complicated thing, but somehow, pictures didn't come up. And that, again, I'm the one that's the least happy with the process on this. If you keep showing people California contemporary, our end result is going to be California contemporary. And if you had to pick three out of four, California contemporary is going to get chosen, because one of them has to be chosen to move on. So, to me, that survey is faulty.
Well, I will say that the community, the movie night and everything had all the different pictures. Mr. Ingram, if you could explore why the website seems to be lacking right now. But some 900 people, I think, responded at the various, the, what, the farmer's market, the movies, the Lions Club baseball event was very helpful. It's discerning, of course, that the pictures aren't up there, but I hope that we can resolve that.
I will definitely check that out.
Even the curvilinear example was entirely geometric on a different question.
I'll have to check that out. I don't know. I haven't seen it myself.
And then, of course, Group Four is going to be meeting with each and every council member.
Yeah. So, what we can do is when they do the final tabulation, we'll have them break out by the events in aggregate where people saw those boards with all the picture populating, and we'll break out what was on the survey, and we'll clarify what happened there. And we'll follow up with you. Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's quite interesting, especially when you have a, what do they call those? You have the boards up, and they're three-sided with all the different pictures. So, as I know, at movie night, they actually rotated all of them, just to make sure that people weren't emphasizing the one that was in front and made it all the way around. So, I know they're trying to make every effort so that everybody sees all the aspects of it, which would be helpful.
Okay, got it.
Other questions? Does anybody from the audience want to pipe in on this? Because this is a community effort. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
Part of the problem I have with the design for the whole park master plan is the community garden is now no longer part of that. So, I was out meeting with the school district, looking at other properties, and the school district mentioned to me that they have an unfunded mandate to find care for pre-K people with disabilities, children with disabilities. And I told them I would mention it to you, that if the daycare center could also act to help children with disabilities. Apparently, it's mandated by the state, but there's no funding for the school districts to pay for that.
Interesting. I know preschool's different, but the school districts are definitely required to provide all kinds of special education and access. So, this is going to be a licensed daycare, or daycare preschool. So, I would assume under current laws, maybe legal counsel can clarify here, that those aspects would have to be included in, yes, excluding special needs. And as far as the community garden, that's not a part of what we're talking about this evening. We need to, this is the one building and the community/recreation center. Vice Mayor Lee?
We're not talking about the landscape, the playground area at all?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Ingram?
That's it.
Okay. This is a very exciting opportunity, I think, for the city of Millbrae. So, did you guys have a comment?
Yeah, I was just pulling up the survey.
Oh, the surveys on, and the pictures?
I have more than two.
You weren't able to get that?
No, I left it up.
The survey I left up for a couple of hours, plus I kept trying to get out of question one without having to click on more than one. So, it was up for at least a half an hour to an hour, and no more photos popped up.
This could, yeah, there's 24. I mean, both council members are bringing it. You might have a personal computer issue there. But again, Group Four will be meeting with you personally. So, we hope that that will resolve current issues here. A grand opportunity for the city of Millbrae. We're looking at, the primary design here would be two stories with views of the park, a big deck area for entertaining, for the community to use, and set up in such a way that we in Millbrae can appreciate to lessen the wind factor at that site. So, we do hope the community stays engaged, and we do hope that we can reach this next level. I will say that I spoke to our supervisor, Mr. Pine, tonight to notify him of how we were progressing here, and we do hope to get also some assistance from the county. So, we are looking at each and every opportunity to really make this a reality. It's extremely important. We are so hopeful that we can break ground next year, because as everyone knows, costs just keep rising, and we don't want to see this opportunity missed by the residents of Millbrae. Any other comments?
No, I just, I appreciate Councilmember Schneider bringing that item up about preschool, because we have school board representatives and school staff on our advisory committee. So, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, and we can close that loop with you at your next meeting. Yeah, so, thank you. Okay.
It would probably be good to, when we describe the licensed daycare, to put all the required elements of it. Because I'm pretty sure state law is very strict on those, and we'll incorporate everything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Moving on. And this is, oh, it is an action, oh, okay, no, okay, that was the informational, new business, item 13. This is consider a waiver request of $144 by Councilmember Ann Schneider for the rental of Community Center Great Room on July 19, 2018. Ms. Schneider, would you like to comment on this?
Actually, I
Oh, yes.
I actually suggested that she leave the diocese. She is directly involved in the item. She probably
Well, we would like to ask questions. Can we not ask questions of the request?
I'm happy to go sit down there.
Yeah, why don't you, maybe, sure, but not as a council member, I think.
Okay.
Well, except it's a council member's question.
I'm just
Okay. Because I'm sure you're confused with me. What happened to the last one?
That is one of the questions I would like to know, and if actually the reason for the event.
How do I turn on?
It's on.
Am I on? Okay. Mayor Papen, you'll remember that you and I met with Chris, not, Chris Del Negro last November and talked about the things that I cared about, and one of them was traffic and safety in the Highlands neighborhood. And you had said, Ann, just go out and have a meeting. Well, it's not that easy for a council member to have a meeting in Millbrae because you have to have insurance and you have to rent the room, et cetera. So it came to council in May, and sadly, my dad was diagnosed with cancer right after that. And then I got hit with two Freedom of Information Act requests from Better Millbrae and the Peninsula Chinese Business Association. There went all my time to be able to organize for that meeting. So now, speaking with the city manager, the request is to move it to July and have Public Works and the Police Department there so that we can talk about the problems with the cars getting hit, blind alleyways, blind corners, to a degree, the burglaries, but this neighborhood hadn't been hit by burglaries as much, formation of neighborhood watch groups and things like that, whatever the public will pick up. But generally, it's the fact that our cars get hit all the time, whether you're on Poplar or Elder or Palm or Ashton or Hazel, or coming through Meadow Glen neighborhood, which is Anita, and things like that. So bringing the neighborhood in and talking about, could we come up with some solutions to slow people down?
Ms. Schneider, as I tried to explain to you previously, this is a city resource here that you're asking us to waive the fees for now for a second time, and I'm greatly sorry to hear about your father. And we've all had the information requests here, but council members like myself, Vice Mayor Lee, Ms. Oliva, we've had public meetings either out in the street, in our neighborhoods, or in our homes. My concern is having public resources put aside when someone else can rent the room here. You've stated you're reaching out to your neighbors. You haven't stated how you want to do that, and now you've also stated that you're using staff time for this event. And that is a problem for me because there's community outreach, and if you wanted to invite the Police Department or Public Works, but to say that they're going to be there on staff time is of concern to me.
Well, Mayor Papen, that's, I can clearly understand how you could feel that way. That was actually at the recommendation of the city manager, the interim city manager, that if you can get that, we can get people to talk, and we can talk about what some of the solutions might be, and then go through the city goal-setting process to get these solutions up there. Because the problems existed for decades.
And we have had our goal-setting session here. Safety, the police sheriff's department was there. My concern is that we all have meetings with the public when, for that, you can announce something at Starbucks and have people meet you there. But I have a problem with dedicating a city resource to a council member for
And I actually have no problem for any one of you to have a public meeting in a space that's conducive for good discussion, which the Chakuti Room is, or the library, or a smaller room. In fact, this meeting is in the Recreation Center, so it's not in the Chakuti Room. It's in one of the other ones. It's not being rented that day. But if that's the direction you're going to go, I will find another avenue, and I'll tell the public.
You're sounding like a threat here, Ms. Schneider.
Well, you passed it the last time, Gina, and you're making it a thing now. Fine, if you guys are going to make it a thing now, let's just move on and get home tonight. We have one more closed-session meeting. You're either going to do it or you're not. You did it before, you're not going to do it now, fine. You guys do what you want to do. I will abstain from voting on it.
Vice Mayor Lee?
I have a question for attorney. In the past, when I want, when, not wanted, but I was told that we couldn't have our pictures or some names or something in city publications and things like that because it'd be considered a use of public funds for political reasons. How do we, I mean, I support what Ms. Schneider is trying to do, which is to try to reach out to the public, but how do we, how is this different from that?
Well, first of all, the picture issue is Prop 73, which was really a limitation on mass mailing, and it was intended to prevent using city resources to mail out things that were, and, you know, for, I think for a long time, Congress people always had newsletters and stuff. So that's a sort of a separate issue. That was an initiative. It only focuses on certain things, and of course, one of the interesting things is it didn't, it predated the Internet. So we've looked in the past at whether, you know, putting pictures on the city website. All that's permitted because Prop 73 only pertains to mailing out things. In terms of using city facilities, I think it's up to the council, however, whatever policy you want to have in terms of the use of city facilities. You just looked at a policy in terms of nonprofits. You may want to have a policy, which is not on the agenda tonight, but a policy for council members or other city officials to hold meetings. I'd say the one thing that is a concern is, and it would be more of a concern during the election period, is using city facilities for political campaign events, or, you know, taking a picture in front of a fire truck, or having city employees stand with you. All those are restricted by specific, you know, statutes. But I don't think there's any legal limitation on a member of the city council holding a meeting in a city building with citizens to discuss city issues.
That seems reasonable.
And I'd like to clarify something. I am not up for election this year. This has nothing to do with electioneering. This has to do with the ability to make sure that your cars don't get hit, and you can get in and out of your car safely.
So my other question is
Vice Mayor Lee?
Thank you. My other question, sorry, just one more question. So we get a stipend of $360-some dollars, another $1,400 of, or expenses. Is this a question of maybe we're not getting enough money to pay for our expenses? Because I would think that we could take that money out of that rather than have to come to the council, right? Because that's what that money's for.
I don't really have a, not really a legal question. You could certainly, I believe, spend that money on this if that's what a council member wished to do.
Well, that's my question, is, are we not, is Ms. Schneider's finding that she's burning through her expenses very quickly, and you're not able to use that money for that purpose? Or is that we need to look at that?
Ms. Oliva?
I was kind of going down the same route. For $144, would, I mean, would you still have the meeting if you didn't have to?
I find it, I don't think it's fair that any one of us would have to pay money to have a meeting that's to the benefit of our neighborhoods. And in fact, in other cities, they rotate neighborhood meetings with two council members at them so that you can hear what your constituents are concerned about. This should be a model all of us should be doing.
I can understand it, and I like the model, and I've had a couple of them at my house, so I respect what you're doing. What I have a little bit of concern with is we're all, we are constituents. We are members, and we shouldn't see ourselves any different. Personally, if I was going to use the Chakuti or the Community Center, I would just pay the $144 and not worry about it.
And sadly, I'm fixing a kitchen in a house that's been flooded, so I don't have the $144 for it, frankly.
Okay. Ms. Schneider has been pointed out, though, that you do have
So if you want to vote, do you want me to leave the room?
Just a minute, please. Mr. Holliver?
Yeah, I'm okay with this, this time, and I, you know, I appreciate your personal issues that you've had to deal with the last few months. So when I saw this, I figured it was an additional meeting on top of the one that you had previously. I think I do have a bit of a concern with having staff present and using staff time at a meeting that's being hosted by one council member. Maybe, and I think this maybe is something that we could develop a policy for. You know, right now, I think the way that the protocols are written is that if there's an item requiring two or more hours of staff time, it has to come to council for, you know, for a formal vote. So if there are going to be, you know, multiple staff members there, each there for one or two hours, that would go beyond that threshold. So I'm okay with allowing it, but at the same time, you know, I don't want this to become a recurring thing where we have to keep, you know, waiving the $144, and there should be some type of policy, a limitation on the number of meetings each council member can host and who can be present.
Let's be clear for the record here. Council members are extremely encouraged to meet with the public whenever they want. This is a free country. Please do so. The issue here is, as I see it, is a city resource. So we open the door to all council members to please engage the public. Vice Mayor Lee?
So is this open to everybody, including other council members, or is it has to be agendized, or how's this?
My concern would be if every council member came there, it would have to be a duly public notice meeting, but I don't have a problem with that. I would encourage, I would love for all four of you to know what the people in this part of Millbrae deal with on a twice-daily basis.
Well, I wouldn't talk like we're not concerned. We are
I'm not saying you're not concerned, but come and listen to the people.
We do listen to people, and we reach out. So I don't, you're acting as though we don't reach out to our constituents. So let me, let me, let me just make a suggestion. It seems like this is, she, Ms. Schneider, Councilmember Schneider has brought up really good points.
Schneider, my name is Schneider.
Sorry. I apologize for, you bring up really good issues, and maybe, you know, we should have a council meeting to talk about, you know, this issue about traffic and, and of speed enhancement has been an interest of mine for a long time. So, you know, it's, maybe we should have just a formal meeting about it.
And to be honest, I would have loved that, but it has never risen up on the goal-setting for three years.
I will disagree with that. We have a new traffic officer, and it is a priority for the city of Millbrae. Ms. Oliva?
Tell us about the meeting. How many people do you anticipate, and do you have an agenda, and who's going to run it? Is it a meeting? Is it a workshop?
I think it would probably be more like a town hall meeting, so I would be running it, but collecting what people's concerns are, if we can identify corners that have overgrown plants, if we can identify, frankly, I'll be quite honest, is it time for a couple of the streets in Millbrae to look at one-way traffic so that people don't try to pass each other and hit the cars on the side? But I'd like to know if the community is open to that. If they're not open to that, then there's no reason to go down that. Are there other ways to slow people down?
How many people do you anticipate?
I would think 10 to 20.
And how will you be promoting this?
I already put a hold the date on Nextdoor.
So Councilmember Schneider, with 10 to, excuse me, I wasn't finished.
Yes.
I'm sorry. And with 10 to 20 people, is it, is it advantageous for the city, just if they were, if they have these complaints, like Councilmember Lee said, if we have enough complaints that come through our website? Would it be advantageous for those 10 people to have all of us there and have a meeting? Or agenda, have a special meeting for that?
It's a possibility. You know, until you've tried something like this, having lived in a community that does these neighborhood meetings on a frequent rotational basis, you grow the number of people who come out as they feel like their council listens to them, and when those issues that they bring up feel like they're getting dealt with. But when you're the first one out the door, although I know that the Ruben, or Mayor Holliver did this last year, but that was Brown Act noticed, but only two people could be in attendance. But you also had an avenue to take whatever, I believe, whatever the people brought up, and try to get some resolution for those concerns. But that's a mayor's priority.
When that was done, not on city property, that was done at the
Yeah, other cities do it on city property. We're pretty different in that case.
How is this supposed to work?
Somebody make some motion.
Okay.
Yeah, unless you want to come up with some other idea. I mean, maybe your suggestion is, let's not do this, maybe, maybe you don't
I'd like to see a whole council
And suggest coming back as a regular meeting. I'm not sure what your pleasure is.
I'd like to
The only legal question is, more than two show up, it needs to be agendized as a public meeting, but
And I think that all of us are interested in those issues and want to give, you know, be involved, so I'm thinking that it should really be an issue for the council, at a council meeting.
I'm going to, I'm going to speak because I am not going to go against $144. I just think that as part of the volunteerism, we have to treat ourselves just like everybody else. And if we have everybody that wants to use this room all of a sudden for $144, they need to pay it. And I, I would strongly suggest you didn't ask for that, but I'm going to not say that I'm not going to say $144 against a council member that wants to meet with 10 people. It seems kind of outrageous for me for $144 for 10 people, too. I mean, 10 people, we're going to say, okay, they're special. I, I don't know. I have to side with Councilmember Lee to say that if there's that much, if there's that much of an outreach, if there's that much concern, let's have a meeting over it. Let's do it, let's, let's all jump on the bandwagon. But I'm not going to vote against this because of $144.
I will say that the council member has the opportunity to use the stipend given to pay the $144 through the city. I will not support this as a waiver. We've done this once before. It did not happen. So I'm, again, I encourage all council members to meet with the public, and you can do so at any Starbucks, or on your street, or in your house, and we encourage that. But at this point, I would not support this measure as presented.
And I believe that, you know, we have, we all, I mean, I'm stressed financially, too, so it's not like, you know, so I budget. And I think that it's our duty to use that money that's given to us by the public, for the public. So, you know, I don't know, I've never come to this council and asked for extra money to put on one of these things. I found other ways of doing it.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
A motion?
Yes, there is. There is a motion by Mr. Holliver. There is a second by Ms. Oliva. Your votes, please. Oh, now it happens.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Thank you. Council comments. Mr. Lee, Vice Mayor Lee?
Yeah, thank you. So the PCE meeting, the Peninsula Clean Energy, which is the, where most people have, are signed up for, and I noticed that Millbrae opt-out rate is going up, opt-out meaning you're, you're using PG&E. And I'm thinking most of that is because a lot of people don't understand that you're getting a 5% discount or cheaper than electricity provided by PG&E. And if you have a question about that, you can contact the Peninsula Clean Energy and then go over your bill with you and to show you that that's the case. Most of the cities are, have opted up, and so in Burnham Game, they have a particular program to encourage businesses to opt up onto something that we may want to consider. And these businesses that elect to opt up, they recognize those businesses on a city website, and they provide stickers saying that they've opted up. So that's, you know, that's, Burnham Game's doing their part to make their city green. At the last C-CAG meeting of CMEC, which is the Congestion Management Environmental Quality Committee, they were talking about those toll lanes. And I think you might be interested. So the toll lanes, managed lanes, is going to happen for Santa Clara, and so San Mateo wants to continue that through and up to San Francisco.
The state of California will be funding that.
Right.
In San Mateo County, just so you know.
Right. So expected construction is expected in October 2019, and it's going, it's going to be estimated completed by February 2022. And they're still, they haven't really, C-CAG and whoever hasn't decided who's going to do the toll, collecting the tolls.
That's true.
And, right. decided who's going to do the toll, collecting the tolls. And, right, and so they don't know what the fees are, so. But it will, it will self-generate itself. There's a lot of mitigating issues involved. At the Associate Bay Area Government's General Meeting, the biggest change, you might be interested in this, is that in order to have a quorum for the budget, passing the budget for A-BAG, it's only those people who are in attendance. Where it used to be, they take the quorum from the total population of all the cities. So now it's just going to be whoever's attending that meeting. And that's, that's, so we'll see how it turns. The reason why they're doing that is because they've had difficulties in 100 and something cities in the Bay Area, and they had a hard time getting a quorum for these, and they would have to do these meetings over and over again. So they decided to change the bylaws to accommodate this. Those are the big issues. We'll give somebody else a chance. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay. I attended the League of California Cities Peninsula Division luncheon. They reported out on the election, and then they reported out on measures that'll be coming in, in November. There are two that they're very concerned about. One, really very concerned, it's the corporate tax proposition. It's a measure being put forward by the beverage companies. But what it will do, if it should pass, is require almost every city special district or special action, and Deanna, you were there, so correct me if I get this wrong, a two-thirds vote. So if you had a special park fee, that would require a two-thirds vote. I think our school bond measure that just passed would be protected because it went over the two-thirds, but it's retroactive. So what the League of California Cities is going to ask every city, and they're sending a letter to every city manager, saying, please look at projects within your city, within your community, within your services, that would be affected should that proposition pass. The second one, there were a number of other ones, but the second one is the California, the SB1 that set up the gas tax, that recalling the gas tax has made it to the November ballot, and they are asking all cities to come up with the projects that the gas tax would be used to benefit every individual city, because they think that we need to reach out to the population and make them understand that this is a way of fixing your potholes. This is a way of fixing whatever the city has. So both of those letters should be coming to them. The National Council of Cities also gave a presentation, and they said that they do think that some infrastructure money should be coming down, so we should be keeping our eyes out for infrastructure funds. Thank you.
Ms. Oliva?
Okay. A couple of things I'd like to report on. Number one is the HEART Board. There was...
Could you explain HEART?
Yes. HEART is Housing Endowment Regional Trust, and I'm actually one of the board members as a Millbrae representative. There is a BMR, Below Market Rates Unit, that came up at 88 Broadway. I'm not soliciting for a sale here, but I want to let everybody know that if they were interested in looking, if they qualify, I would contact HEART, H-E-A-R-T, website. And with my experience, I will say it is a prime candidate. That would be a school teacher, and I would love to see it go to somebody in Millbrae, and that's why I'm extending that information. Also, I wanted to let you know that tomorrow, tomorrow is a good time. Tomorrow is. Another, another board that I serve on for this, in representing the city of Millbrae, is the Sheriff's Activities League. And we are having a fundraiser. It's a house party they haven't done. Millbrae, I volunteered to do it, but not at my house. It's at Armenta House at 236 Taylor Boulevard, and there will be a hot dog cart and some drinks, and a couple of the Sal success stories from the children. And also, there's talk that the chief may stop by and possibly, both. I was just going to know, and possibly the sheriff, depending on, depending on their scheduling. So 5:00, everybody is welcome. It is a fundraiser, and I have to be honest, I sent out many invitations to the city of Millbrae constituents, and I was very successful in getting some nice little thing, little checks back. So thank you for those that did that. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Hollibur?
Yeah, let's see. Yesterday, I attended the MCTV Board of Directors meeting. They will be purchasing a new server equipment. Their old server is about 20 years old, so they do have some funds in the budget for that. They will be going to, I believe, HD broadcasting, at least on their online streams. Unfortunately, Comcast does not allow them to go HD, but the online streams will be HD with the new server and with new cameras that they'll be getting. And then I attended the Sister Cities Commission meeting. Oh, one other thing for MCTV. They are any day now looking to get rid of the old RV that they used to have. So if you or anybody you know can fix up an RV and sell it, or wants a nice project to work on, feel free to contact MCTV, and they would be happy if you could take their RV off their hands. Let's see. I attended the Sister Cities Commission meeting. They are tentatively planning on a trip to Mosta sometime, probably in the spring of 2019. So they're putting together a subcommittee to start planning that. The president who visited us last month will be in office, I believe, for the first few months of 2019, and she would like a visit from Millbrae while she's still in office. So I think they're trying to plan it while she's still there. And then I attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, and we had another discussion about the potential sale of surplus property, you know, just a very exploratory look into that and how that would be done, and gauging the interest of the commission on that. I was also informed, Mackenzie's here, that they had a film that was actually filmed in Millbrae Central Park, and we're looking at possibly doing some type of a screening or something at some point in the near future. I think it was a student film, and this is a Millbrae native who made the film and filmed part of it in Millbrae. So looking forward to that.
We worry about the ratings?
Possibly.
Oh. Vice Mayor Lee, did you...
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Hollibur, for your report. I was wondering if staff can look into, maybe looking into the franchise agreement with Comcast about the HD feed?
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Hollibur? Okay. I'd like to suggest we do some sort of regulation or accommodation for the retired District Director Four of Caltrans, Bijon, retired March 2018, and did a great deal of service throughout San Mateo County. So hopefully, we can get that resolution going here. FYI, we're hoping to draft a letter of support and work with staff. SFO, the airport, has recommended certain aspects for the proposed weekend early morning services of BART. For those who don't know, the tunnel that goes under the bay for BART will be under construction and repair for the next several years, which means service, oh, across the bay is going to be exceptionally limited. We understand there will be express buses feeding into the Transbay Terminal. Then the question becomes what happens in San Mateo County. So the airport has sent us certain recommendations that they are proposing to BART to fill the gap, and we, as a county, need to look at how they're going to fill the gaps here. Originally, they did not want to add extra trains, for some reason, in San Mateo County. One of the airport recommendations is that they do so. The other recommendation that's important is that there be an express bus from Samtrans feeding not only SFO, but hopefully the station here in Millbrae, express bus from the Transbay Terminal down the peninsula here. So we are looking closely at the recommendations from SFO and talking to Samtrans and leaders throughout San Mateo County to please suggest ideas so that the impact of those repairs will not devastate everyone who's trying to commute either from the East Bay to this region. Yes, Ms. Snyder?
What report is that? I haven't seen anything like that.
There's no really report. There was a letter. This is what BART, excuse me, SFO is recommending to the BART Board as a way to relieve the issues dealing with the airport.
Can we get that sent to all five of us?
Sure you can. We will send that off. We hope that the city staff will look at this and support or add to the recommendations that are being made. BART is going to submit formal recommendations as to how they're going to accommodate this interruption in service. So we really want everyone to, if they have any ideas in how to lessen the impact on the commuters, it's very important there. Also, working to, for those who don't know, to try to get a grant. We have authority to use the SFPUC property next to Green Hills Park between the Mormon Church as a dog park. We just lost Mr. Hollibur on that one. Sorry about that. So there are some, there's some grant money that's out there that we would like to try to get. You going to be okay, bud? He's working on it. So again, this is not really a city operation here, but we hope to at least establish that. It is a nonprofit.
How can a dog park not be a city activity?
It's not at this point in time. The city received, the city received, the city received authority to use this property as a dog park at this point in time. There is no funding available for that. It was not a priority in our goal-setting session. But there are grants out there, and we hope to ignite the efforts. And then it would come back to the city to work out some sort of maintenance and support issues. There is, again, the members of the, what is it, Friends of the Millbrae Dog Park have a plan and diagrams and plans and all of that that they would like to see on this proposal, but it would all come back to the city of Millbrae should the funding start to progress in the right direction. So it's not a city element or in our goal-setting at this point in time. This is just an informational item that we're working on to try to get things moving in the right direction. Okay. We will get this out to all the council members as to where the recommendations go. We are going to be adjourning to a closed session, but we will close the regular meeting in memory of Evelyn Papa George, longtime Millbrae resident. I think her sons were very active in a lot of the events here. She passed away on Tuesday, June 26, at her home in Millbrae. And on behalf of, hold on, Tina, yep, mother-in-law of the city, and senior civil engineer Jane Cowell, who passed away June 7 of this month. Our thoughts and prayers go out to all of the families who have lost. And with that, we will close in their memories. Thank you. We will adjourn to a closed session.
I know I can't.